The English Agency of the White and the Middle States. We do about the same one. It is that.
Good evening. In patient way. I will want to know that we met in the back of the class for lots of minutes prior to the time. Plus, a two person. Um, we have three going to be at nine and four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten. But man, and you're news. So with that being said, we will leave you ready to our fingers kind of happen in that car.
I would be happy to introduce everyone to fourth grade teacher Maria and all. We get straight to your point we've heard. And while you remember us talking about the entire language market of English. We now have fourth grade and fifth grade utilizing the program and our apps that are coming here.
So we wanted to give a overview of logic of English. Um, we took this quote from the curriculum, the hard life ministry, the line of teaching the phonograms, it looks fine, but all of our different languages. And that truly is the basis of the program. Um, the building block that we started with part of those phonograms. And that is the picture we use to represent sounds. Those are the basic phonograms of A, B, C, D. Those multi-letter phonograms were S, H, O, I, O, Y, A, Y. And then those advanced phonograms, which ones we bring from other languages in like the French. Um, like E, U, B accents or C, U, where it brings those in. Um, those are kind of the basis of our program when we start all of our students and that's one of our beginning goal blocks. We teach students then that all of those phonograms have phonemes or sounds that come with them. Some of them have one, some of them have two, some of them they have three or four. Um, and then the last part is we teach them a lot more things. And those are those mini parts of words like plex and met. Um, and we teach students that as we advance in our spelling vocabulary. Some words less rely on patterns and now we're adding morphemes and that could be kind of great there.
Um, to take it a little further, um, so logic of English is a great curriculum in that it doesn't help with spelling. Um, it actually helps to develop to vocabulary, threatening those beholding and upper mentions. And especially for struggling readers, um, as all of those are related to. I mean, phonics system that we use to write English words while we all probably reading those books and it is extremely complex. Um, there is remarkably, um, logic and consistency between what's being in the reverse fact. Um, so this curriculum teaches seventy-five written programs, which in the next slide, we will go into a little bit more about what exactly are programs? And, um, we have basic and then advanced programs that we teach in the curriculum. Um, this curriculum also teaches thirty-one different spelling rules. So out of those thirty-one spelling rules, ninety-eight percent of English words can be accurately described and relate back to those spelling rules. So it really does take you very complex, complex language and then show the logic and consistency between that complex language. Um, out of the two percent of words that not only follow those very large spelling rules. Um, we can try things on the linguistic and morphological factors, especially when it comes to like Latin roots. Um, just playing differently in dialects between languages.
So we want to show you this example of basic and advanced phonograms. So when we start the year, we start by teaching students all the basic phonograms, all those basic sounds, um, basic letters. And then we build on those as each unit goes on. So the first one there, A, that's a basic phonogram. We teach the students that A has three sounds and the way we learn the sound is by the most frequency they come into words. So it's short sounds, first sense, long silence, broad sound. Um, that will be the ones most found in frequent within the English language. Uh, as we grow on that, we teach that advanced phonograms. So my students will learn E, D, it makes the long piece sound. At that same time, we introduce them to E, D with the accent where it makes the long A sound. We talk about how striking the French, we talk about the words like matinee, puree, how sometimes they curl the accent there and sometimes they admit it. Um, but when we're reading, we come to that, we now know that those two letters can make two different sounds. And that can help us decode the word even better. And once we have them so automatic, our brains will just help us decode them much better. So we have a lot more pieces at the beginning, either just two morphemes, um, that currently my students of their grade are looking at. And the great thing about morphemes, um, and we're going to talk a little more about the group that sees a lot of morphemes in their words. Is they love to, when they see them, to find other words that match those morphemes that aren't in their spelling lists. Um, as they come through, so we kind of look at a word and we break it apart by its morphemes. And try to determine if they thought it was a morpheme that might be called it and then we kind of compare it to what it is in the dictionary, uh, later on. And then we're going to talk about those thirty-one spelling rules. We just want to give you an idea of two different spelling rules, um, our kids have seen this year. Uh, and the great thing about this is when they learn them, they get so interested on trying to prove themselves, trying to prove them wrong. That they spend the next twenty, thirty minutes trying to find something that won't fit rule three. Um, and usually they find words that aren't driving the English language to make it to have a bit. Um, and even with rule twenty-one, I did have a kid the other day, they were going through making words plural. They were talking about it and he was explaining to his partner on why they were adding E, S instead of S. And he goes, well, don't we hear two syllables now and for the word wish, it makes it wishes. And he goes, we got tells you right away, it has to be E, S. And then we'll do a little fun game where we'll try and say words and we'll try that substance to them. Like wish, like adding an S and you just can't say it, you can't articulate the sound. Um, and we talked about how that is there to help us create that sound easier. Um, because Jasmine's going to ask that you just can't, it's hard to make, try to say the word wish. Which it's hard to produce the sound. Um, so they enjoy learning about the rules more than ever before, I think. Um, and as we get into benefits, we'll talk a little more about that.
Um, so one really awesome thing about this curriculum is it uses, you know, a level grouping. Um, so the curriculum has three different levels. Level A, B, and C. Um, so this really helps the teacher to be able to give her entry instructions based on the student's need and their current level of knowledge. Um, each unit includes four instructions about systematic phonics and then it's going to be awareness, spellable, and grammar. Students that apply, if there are skills or gut skills, like what are to their level of spelling, they will type it in. So it really works on getting students in a group that is, you know, the words aren't going to be too easy for them, they're not going to be too hard. It's kind of getting them right next to each spot, um, where, you know, they still have challenge, but they don't feel too challenged and things aren't easy for them as well. But then the next slide, we'll talk a little bit more about, you know, what are these three levels of reading of it. Um, so at the beginning of the year, students need a placement test. Um, and then this helps to identify where the students fall. So if a my student is in level A, which they refer to as a blue group. Level B, which is referred to as green group, which is, you know, your stronger spellers. And then level C is your more advanced spelling, it is work group. Um, what's important to note is that while, um, students who take a placement test in the beginning of the year. Um, groups can be adjusted throughout the various student problems. So for instance, if a student is placed in the blue group at the beginning of the year. Blue group is really focused upon signal and the full syllable words. Um, and the fact that the practice is really more just the concepts and the other. Um, if you're doing well on, you know, assessment, we can try pushing them to that green group. You know, seeing how they do with a little bit more challenge in the word list. Um, and, you know, and so forth. And of course, we can bomb students down and, you know, the placement test shows that. You know, saying they're supposed to be in that orange group, but you know, we think maybe losing them down to that green group might be a better fit. Um, so, you know, your blue group focuses on one and two syllable words. Um, the instructions really on the concepts. Level B, which is your stronger spellers, your, um, kind of at benchmark, right at grade level. Um, different about, uh, morphemes and long syllable words. So now, you know, we're getting into three, four, five syllable words. Um, and then level P, which is your advanced spelling, which is your students that are, you know, above grade level. Um, and in the orange group, that's where we really, um, dig over the morphemes and the vocabulary word itself. Um, we're able to clean more subtle words with morphemes and spelling patterns. Um, and that's kind of relating back to that and the new group, so taking the morpheme definition and then like what he was mentioning, comparing that to the dictionary. Um, so then we just wanted to give you kind of a visual. So in the fourth grade, students start at unit eight. And that's where, so in unit, like third grade, uh, students have a unit seven, the fourth will make a thousand and eighty. I just wanted to give you kind of, um, a visual of what the differential spellers would look like. Um, it's completely a blue group, the green group in the middle, and then the work group. Um, so you can definitely see when the level of words increasing, the level that we live in.
So we study about seven units in a year. And those seven units are kind of built into five parts. Uh, each unit progresses in the same fashion. Uh, we start the unit by going with the central concept, that's reached all those new phonograms, all those new skills, all new spelling rules. They kind of front load our units, they have all the building blocks before they see any word they're going to enter into the yes. When we get into building words, that's when they get there with us and we do this thing called spelling analysis. And they actually are super engaged. I thought that fifth graders redoing finger spelling might sound a little childlike, babyish for them, but they truly enjoy it. Um, we introduce the word, we give it a sentence, we count its syllables. And then we kind of orthographically map that word out using our fingers. We break it down by its phonemes, by its phonograms. And we really try to form the part that a four-letter word like tree has three phonemes, three phonemes. And has three phonograms, it has four letters, but those E, D make one phonogram and one sound. So we really try those things, phonograms, spelling analysis, and they see the connection from the spelling rules, spelling kinds of learning with the different. Midway through the unit, we start talking about grammar rules. We go through every single unit and map out nouns, verbs, adjectives, adverbs. We look at words that can be multiple forms of speech. Um, and then near the end of the unit, we then take over those morphemes, especially with that orange group like the listening stall. It's going through there and then defining all, finding all those morphemes they have, defining them, pulling out those definitions. Um, you know, some of the blue group, there's some compound words we'll talk about, um, in the, uh, sorry, the green group. In the blue group, we'll still go through them and still keep mapping out their words. They really do need that ability to, what sounds am I hearing and what letters are making those sounds? And then at the end of the unit, we do a check for understanding, that's kind of like our test. We'll test everything from, I think, what, fifty-six phonograms or, you're fifty-something right now?
Yeah.
Fifty-some phonograms right now. Um, we'll go through all the spelling rules, the grammar rules, their lists. Have them go through and look at their list and find out which words are announced in adjectives, verbs. And then also some of the words that are both, how's it being used in sentences, being used now as a, as an adjective or nouns and nouns or vice versa. So we'll end just by giving you some benefits and we titled the slide benefits for students and teachers. Because as we sat and talked about it, we truly felt that if there's not the benefits for kids. We probably have seen a lot of benefits for us as teaching it. We learned just as much as they are now. It's a totally different way. I've been just for eleven years, so eleven years of spelling is a totally different way than that hot spelling ever before. And but I benefited from it, they're benefiting from it. Um, so we want to title that student and teacher. And the first one, I think, is our biggest benefit. Uh, it's this increased interest in books. I've never had so many fifth graders ask why or what about in eleven years. Um, that they just want to know why something is now. They, they find a word in their book, they find a word, um, on the board or from an article and they can relate it back to what they're learning. They relate it back to those morphemes or those patterns. Um, or you hear them talk about, well, they should make this sound now. Um, because we're applying it to those tools. Or, well, what about this word? We had a great session on the word said here, that people talking about AI and why don't we say say? And then we had some research, bits in the research and found that, I guess, in Britain, they kind of do say say. And it kind of developed over our dialogue over years and we've kind of transformed it a little bit. But that's the truth because I'm never gets interested in wanting to research words in the world and never before.
Um, so our second benefit there is just a constant review. Um, so the curriculum is set up to spiral. Um, so with that being said, in the past curriculums, uh, it was kind of, you know, you get a list of words, you memorize those words. Take a test Friday, next week you get a new list. Now, that is not the piece of logic of English. So while students basically, students that you're in do have, it's a thing that is why it lives to their level. Whether they're in that blue green or orange group. Um, they're inspiring. So in fourth grade, we're currently in unit twelve. We might be making connections back to either one student who are in third grade and say unit six. Um, so it's just a constant repeating, constant spiral. You know, it's not that, you know, you can start memorizing it, taking tests on it, and then it's, you know, kind of in your own ear, out the other. Um, so those concepts, those patterns, those morphemes, they continue to reoccur. Um, so as students progress through the unit, it's like their knowledge of English language continues to draw and it gets broader and wider. Um, I think it's also important to note that in the fifth part, um, the issues broken down into those five parts, probably we'll talk about that fifth part only actually assess the students. Um, so students can actually be assessed on words that we were given, um, in a previous, you know, previous unit on their list. Um, but it's not just like students are testing on the list within their current unit. Um, you know, we continue to pull words back from previous.
Who are the students that say how our language works, but consider, and that is not how we learn. They're just, they better understanding that you don't have to look at a word. I, I'm just hoping they look at a word and know how to spell all that. They now understand why it is the way it is. Why does that C sometimes make the sound or the S sound? And when will that appear in our language? And how can I tell when I'm reading a word that's going to make fun of those students?
Um, there's some rapport there, um, we talked about level lists a lot, but this is really good because every student is getting exactly what they need to their level. Um, so just, you know, and it's not just the differentiating spelling list, you know, then we're differentiating the grammar concept, the pattern, the morphemes of the words we say each unit. Um, however, everything is interconnected. So even if a student, you know, there's similarities between a blue group at level A that beginner speller lists a word to the order that advanced group. So we're still able to see similarities from the end of the word, so whole group discussions, we can still compare, you know, all of these words. Um, however, the students are really getting exactly what they need. Um, and it's great to see too, because, you know, you never want a student to feel like things are too easy. Or it's too challenging where they give up and they're frustrated. So being able to see students that excited about spelling is fabulous. And I think that kind of goes back to being able to provide students exactly what they, the differentiating folks.
So what I've had is just that, you know, this program teaches them the rules, they're reading and everything. One thing, if you read the front part of, uh, our teacher manual, it is taught about trying to use the word, that's an exception anymore. Like that's an exception to this rule, this word's an exception to that rule, this word's an exception to that rule. But giving them the rules and the reasons behind it. Yeah, we may find some of those exceptions here and there, but we truly try and find what's that rule? What's one of those thirty-one rules? And those thirty-one rules have a couple of parts, some of them are secondary parts of them. Um, but where does it kind of fit in there? So we thank you for allowing us to come to this and talk to you about logic of English. Um, we'll be happy to answer any questions, the best.
Do you have a question? And so I don't. Did this replace like the yellow grammar packets that you guys used at school, like in like four, three years in short? Like with like a grammar, like a bunch of words and things? Like the name of.
So this is part of like our sitting program, sitting spelling program that's kind of replacing that.
Okay. Cause this seems, I mean, this seems, I am not, I'd be like the blue group scholar and having the old challenge, be challenged with the orange and like this. This package for this, for me with my slide, this grammar is not my forte.
This integrates a lot of the grammar concepts into them.
Yeah.
Like we study, um, like we even study just like dialogue or like, uh, pre dialogue. That comes up and we actually do dictation sense of that where they dictate out the dialogue and then they go back and almost back it during the sentence. And find all parts of speech in there and practice those words in the comma go, where period go, within the dialogue, after the dialogue, things like that. It was really great on integrating those concepts together. And we see a lot of them too, where some of the classes we taught in isolation in writing, now bringing the spelling. So we're almost getting it double, uh, as well, which is great.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's harder with the, I, I know for me always as a student, even as an adult, the exception is where I struggle. And so I think it's great that like look for the rules with that, because I think that's what I'm saying. Yeah, and, um, so that's why I got one slide benefits for students and teachers, you know, after discussing it kind of like the problem like, oh, it's pretty hard on for, you know, us as the teacher. It's just all these things are flipping. It's like, oh, that, that is why we do that. And there is a role in English, the language is very complex, but really, you know, there are rules of things and just, you know, so. Like all spoken for student and, and teacher, but it's good, yeah.
And I think too, it really speaks to that they are, they're not just sunrise, something, they're learning. It's a true, and I'm, you know, it's a cap corserator in this hour of time. And he, he does really, he's learning why things are the way they are and able to help his little sister, we can consider our learning how to be better at breaking down words and things like that. So it's, it is so nice not to just, um, you know, why memorize the words, like you said, memorize the words. Hold on to them until Friday, where he's constantly talking about pulling back to words from the past and incorporating them. We just want to make it so. This is the third one. Can you find me if you have any students who's really, maybe really not when they step to the curriculum?
So one great thing about the manual, like the manual, is there are parts that where like it will say, in you, in, in your region, you pronounce the sound this way. You can do this. And that sometimes helps with the way Wesley, um, is moving in, we didn't know originally United States where they may sound different. Uh, say something different or they get a sound for a word. Those really things to know. Um, I think the most benefit I've seen is with, um, kind of middle ground, like readers, like it's more, more strong readers. Um, it's maybe like strong spellers like that, that green group, they roam the most. I think promise, I think it benefits all of them. I think even kids moving in. I think one thing we always saw a lot of our program was because it ruins up so much from K through five. You had that kid come fourth grade from Tennessee who never seen it before. They had all these words to remember. Now since we're cycling through this and we're not so much learning to just memorize the spelling of them, that they're high frequency words. We're now looking at it as the patterns and all that. They're easily able to pick up all those things and bring in something that they're going to hold, worship in and now apply to the curriculum. Uh, even better. So I think they're faster to even more than we've seen in the past.
Um, also kind of going off that touch of the others, because my class at home, um, they do not speak English and they don't speak another language. And he actually lives in my blue group, that advanced group. Um, so I think this, you know, kind of where we were all.
It's great to see students who speak more than one language, as you said.
Yeah.
Uh, like when we get to the advanced phonograms and, um, like we have, who parents might see a little bit of French at home. We talk about those French, those advanced phonograms, like we, we, they have a whole big thing to tell us about. And it's great to have them bring that piece of themselves into the classroom as well and be able to apply it, um, to what we're, to kind of what we're.
I think I'm with Jamie and I failed your class, but I would say, you know, adding a little bit of your, uh, your takeaways and positives. Um, I think to a head of point, I think it would be a huge advantage to students. Um, I was a foreign language major in college and started eighth grade. Uh, one of the toughest things for me, because you learn that as you're learning a language. And, you know, a teacher or professor in college would say, you know, here's a tense. And, you know, in my head, I would say, well, we don't have that in the English language. Oh, yes, we do, but I just don't, you know, I, I never, as a native English speaker, never really knew that stuff and never really had that foundation. I think it really will, will help students, you know, given one, it comes if they start speaking another language. Having that foundation of the rules and everything that you kind of know, but you don't realize, but you know it. Um, that would have been a huge help if I studied the Spanish language. Because again, that, that foundation was there, just, I, I didn't know what to call it, I didn't know how to place it. And I didn't know how to match that, you know, that verb tense or whatever, whatever it was, the rule in Spanish, you know. Uh, I, I think it would be a huge benefit to students learning another, having that foundation.
So, um, it's even interesting to see sometimes with our more advanced spellers who just decode so quickly in their mind. And it was so automatic that, and now when we have them kind of drill down to those individual phonemes. They realize that, hey, X has G sounds. Like they did, it was, it was surprised, some of my, my, my advanced spellers made a year when we went over X and they would only think about silent phone. Or Fox, but one thing about one of the other, and to realize, oh, there's a whole other sound there that I didn't realize. Because I decode so quickly that word, I just know what it is, I know the sound, I can just figure it out. Um, I think that's a great thing too, that even for our most advanced spellers. Um, this program truly does challenge them and does open up these whole other avenues. And if parents say, actually, this is, we will be working, it's like SAT rap. Like you're like, how we can tell definition of a word. Sure, I'm, I'm not preparing for the SAT in the third grade, but yeah, we can, if you're, if they remember them until, uh, let them create the SAT usually we can. But I think you'll see the benefits of it far around lasting than just that.
Thank you very much. There are these citizen comments in the board on agenda, I have to be right here.
Nothing online.
Hey, good evening. We're going to start, uh, the focus areas on, uh, what we're trying to accomplish this year. Um, so, you know, one of the worst line here. Um, we had, we had this year experienced the challenges with the internet and the infrastructure. Um, we're working on some infrastructure improvements to, uh, overcome those issues. Um, we have to review middle school devices. Um, devices and how much they cost for repair and cybersecurity. Um, that looks a little great there. Um, basically that is, um, the Center for Information Security. That is the implementation group one, which is the most basic, um, cybersecurity practices that we should be following. All right, so on the next slide, we'll start with challenges. So private here, we've been having some hit miss inconsistent wifi. Um, we've been working on that. Uh, we just recently put in, um, a, a new wireless controller that is more robust. Um, it really seems to be helping at this point, um, having a lot less connection drops. Uh, so that's been one good thing that's been going on. Um, we have internet availability, um, that has been an issue from time to time. Uh, one of the pro, or one of the issues we have is, uh, we occasionally have been reaching our bandwidth limits. So kind of like at home and you have, uh, like your whole family streaming videos. And another one playing a game and you're trying to do your bank stuff and it's running really slow and you sometimes get the, uh, page not available. That's what that's all about. Um, we have had some, uh, issues with halogens. Did you know squirrels love fiber optic cable? They do. So anyhow, we, we've had an issue just this year with AS world chewing fruit table. Up north, uh, which also, uh, gave us some internet, uh, challenges. Uh, so that was one issue we had. Um, also, um, our servers, uh, the infrastructure and stuff, it is posted at last. Um, so occasionally when that fiber gets cut and we lose internet, sometimes we lose those services. Um, so that is another challenge we have. Um, for future plans, um, we're working with a technology, uh, kind of, uh, steering committee right now. Uh, to explore, uh, going forward, what would be our best hardware platforms, you know, like Mac, Chromebooks, iPads, Windows PCs. Uh, so we're kind of exploring that to see, uh, what would work best, uh, not only for the budget, but for educational purposes. Uh, so we're continuing, uh, through that and also through some software. Um, there were some software packages years ago that are no longer supported, but run on, uh, current, um, hardware. So we need to review those, make sure that, uh, they will run on newer devices. Maybe there's, you know, better product down there. Um, and we also have, uh, Um, and we also have a a couple situations of. Similar products, so like uh we have. Three different titles that do quizzes for the classroom. So that three different systems that hit that to log into and get accustomed to. It may be better to use just one. So kind of exploring that is what. Alright, so anyhow, back for those challenges on the next slide. Uh, here's some of the things that we have done. So I did mention wireless. So as you can see, those log we had previously was under like in twenty nineteen. So we're running a borrow time in the mean time. So um you replaced uh. The the controller and it has been running as of last month. And so far, things have been looking pretty good. Um. Always a little room for tweaking some stuff, but. It's been doing a lot better than it has been in the past. We're also working on uh an addition to get back up internet. When those squirrels decide that they need to get hungry on a little fiber in their diet, um we're. Basically going to have a. Have a an automatic switch over so that when that fiber gets chewed through. Or an ISP issue happens upstream, we'll back up to a different ISP so we still have internet access. So uh learning can still continue. Um, that's currently working progress. It's not in yet, but it should be within next month. Um. We also have um a bunch of uh network equipment that uh when I came in that. It's been a little shaky at best. Um. What was it? Last year, would that be last year now? Yeah, so last year, um last came in and uh took care of our most of our um. Core switches are the ones that do all the active routing around, kind of thinking of them as like a telephone operator. Um, those got replaced. Things have gotten somewhat more stable, but we still have some other equipment on the edge. Um, so like the footsters, each room, the access points, um stuff like that. Um. Those still need replaced, yeah. Um. The the existing devices. I'll call them like a prosumer grade where they're great for enthusiasts, not real great for an organization size. So. One of the proposals we got here uh is to uh get that the rest of the equipment replaced to uh anything's more solid uh and more reliable. Okay, uh on the next slide, we're gonna talk a little bit about hardware and what it costs to uh. Get different devices. So as you see, uh we have the MacBook Airs. Um, right now, those are running. About nine hundred dollars. Um. At right now, at the high school, each student gets one of those. Um, there's also um the MacBook Pro, uh which teachers are using. You can see the price is uh about one thousand two hundred bucks. Um, they're a little more robust, uh. They they're more suited for a teacher rather than for a student. Uh, we're also looking at prices for iPads. So the iPad uh ninth generation runs around three hundred dollars. And the newest one, which is just slightly bigger. Runs uh four hundred nineteen. For basically the 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 same storage. But slightly bigger processor and slightly bigger screen. Um, finally, um, you have Chromebooks, which right now is running about three hundred fifty nine dollars per device. Plus thirty eight dollars. To manage it. It's important that we uh manage all the devices. Um, so that. Basically, the. We manage them so that if everything is consistent across them, um. Students don't go doing things that they shouldn't be doing, uh helps support us building policies. Uh, let software get installed on all that stuff. Um. And as for a. An iOS or a Mac platform, that would run ten dollars a year. So basically, as far as a phone book. Uh, for a four year cycle, about what's happening. Uh, continuing on with middle school devices. Um. As it currently goes right now. The sixth grader's got random programs. Uh, as a pilot. Um. In seventh grade, they have uh MacBook Pros that were recycled here from the high school, tried to get them. Try to get a little bit better device in their hands. Um, I'll go over that in a second on why that's the case. Um, and then in eighth grade, they have uh MacBook Airs that are on their sixth year. Um. Seventh graders also have that same model, but they were a little bit older yet. So we replaced them out, like I said, to try to get a better device in their hands. Um, because if those could. In the six year cycle, we've been having a lot of breakdowns. We've been having a lot of uh batteries that don't hold the charge. Six years is too long. Uh, when I just speak for Apple rep and I had mentioned that he's like, wow, six years. Uh, we would have replaced them before that. So it. That's kind of where we're at now, so we're looking at. As part of that steering committee. Where. Or what device will work for seven and eighth grade? Um, let's see. So yeah, some of the old devices, so repeatedly coming back for things. Uh, some of them have internal cables that just keep popping out because they've been pushed in and. They pop back out again for too many times and once again, battery uh charge issues and just not being able to hold a charge for even half a day. Okay, on the next slide, we're continuing on with uh repair costs. So just kind of going over a few things here. So uh previous uh year, twenty one, twenty two. You can see a pretty large number there uh for repairs, eighty one thousand five hundred twenty one dollars. And change. Um. A lot of that had to do with uh laptops that were not collected back uh during COVID. So we had. Ton extra breakages that we had to deal with to get some of those devices back in shape. And a lot of that ended up being outsourced. So basically, we sent it out to a third party. They fixed some, we fixed some in-house too, but we couldn't quite get to a lot. This current year so far, we're running a little over ten thousand dollars. Um. As you can see, we. We're doing more in-house, providing the parts, uh only sending that that out when we absolutely need to, so we do have a bit of savings there. Um. We also have supplies by bits uh for general supplies, which would, which is where the repair parts would be under. That also covers things like the adapters that go on the side of the laptops that you can project things to your screen. Um, memory card readers, um adapters, plug-in robots, you know, whatever else is going on, so that comes out of there. Um. So out of out of that budget, um the cars cost us. About or was it seven thousand three hundred eighty four dollars and change? So it's been considerably less expensive this past year. So that's definitely a good thing. Uh, we also do have an insurance program. Um, we have. I would have liked to have seen the uh. Participation on it be a little bit higher. Um, since it hasn't been. There have been uh some uh. Some repairs that have had to have been at cost and right now we have. About six thousand seven hundred dollars worth of those repairs outstanding that not have. Collected back yet. So because of that, we're gonna have to look at how we want to ensure. Stuff is or or devices in subsequent years. Uh, and what we're doing right now. It works, but not without.
Well, I'm sorry, but what percentage of people of us students did actually. This year did.
It was about twenty five percent. Roughly. Some of them are taking a gamble, trying to go on, okay, we can save the money and maybe my child won't break it. For some people that has not. Came out so well, others it has because we did take it, so. There's where we are with that. Um, laptop bags. There's kind of been a little bit of a uh an. Interesting item here. Um. So a little experiment, um. So we had sixth graders and uh the elementary school kids that uh had Chromebooks. So I can do hard protective cases for them where they're on all the time instead of bags. Um, as you can s- see that uh on the bottom round, there's the Chromebooks without bags. We had twenty two of six hundred fifty one devices. Out there that were uh with hardware issues. Uh, that's. About three and a third percent. Which is too awful bad. We also had the MacBooks when they were in bags and we had ninety grades of. One thousand thirty one devices. You can see it's uh eight, three quarters percent. Um, what we've been finding is a lot of times the students use their laptop bags as backpacks. And stuff everything they can into them, which uh. Has been leading to breakage. Then finally. We'll get all the way from the hardware and go to the cybersecurity. So. We're working, we we have some of this stuff going down uh pretty well, but there's still a lot of work to do, yeah. Um, one thing is that we need to document all of our inventory. Um, including hardware, software, user accounts, um and where all our data sits. Um, so. Each of those applications that teachers use, um. Let's say it's all for one, um Canvas, maybe uh one of those quiz sites. All of them have some student information on there. We need to make sure where all that stuff is at in case something happens. And one of the ways we're going to have to do that is go through a vetting process, you know, uh check service level agreements with. Um, these other vendors, make sure that we're covered. Uh, so it's, there's a a lot of extra stuff behind the scenes that needs to be done. Um. Also, we need to make sure that the software that we're using will continue to be supported. Um, occasionally you have something that needs Internet Explorer from. Fifteen years ago, um which you can't even get on a new computer anymore, so have to watch that. Uh, I did mention about the service level agreements. Um, briefly there. Another thing we need to focus on is encryption on devices. Let's say I lose my iPad. Where'd it go? It's important that. The the that the uh information on here is encrypted that nobody else can see. The good news is we're covered with IPads. Uh. But it could be a laptop, could be any number of things. So we play, so we need to make sure it's encrypted in case something gets in the wrong hands out for repair or just gets lost or forgotten. Uh, and that'll. Cover some of our liabilities. Uh, multi-factor authentication is another big one. Your bank account. I'm pretty sure every one of them has that at this point, at least. Yeah, has a a notification that shows up on your phone or makes a call or sends a text or something. The kind of proof that it's you and not somebody's or somewhere else trying to pose to you to get into it. Um, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three-ish. Is the uh time period where passwords, username, not enough. So we need to work on a multi-factor authentication. Um. We need to collect and analyze a lot of logs. See, are there logins that shouldn't be happening, certain um changes, stuff like that. That way we can tell if uh somebody else is in our systems. Um, we I have not found any of that luckily, but. We we need to have a little more automated process on that. Um, security awareness program. Um. Working on a little bit of it right now, but a lot of that will come out to be eh like newsletters going out, like here's how you identify when somebody's trying to fish you. Um, whether it be. On a telephone call, trying to give a password change, but uh when you. It may not even be that person. Um, things like uh emails or even. Some ads. That are a little misleading. Kind of education show uh to uh so you can see. How to identify that stuff, throw red flag in your head and go, hmm, you know, maybe I better ask somebody first before I do this. Um, and finally, incident response. Here's one we're lacking. Um, we need a documented plan if anything happens. Right now, there's not a documented plan and. It'll be fun if I discover a uh. An incident tomorrow, so um we need to figure out what we're going to do, who's going to be contacted. Um, what procedures we're going to do in-house, who are we gonna call from outside uh for help? Um. And any other legal requirements that we maybe uh. Have to follow for that. So that's what the uh the uh the incident response plan is all about. This is funny. Does anybody have any questions? That probably opened up a whole lot of.
I have a question about the repair, the outstanding repair costs and the insurance. Um, how are do we communicate that out to the family like regarding? The insurance, like that availability and if there are any of the repair. All of that.
Okay, alright. So firstly, um, the first thing we did is we sent out some papers with students. There was also a uh uh school messenger blast that went out. To enroll. We did get responses back from both campaigns, not as much as I had wished for, but we did get them. Um. So that that was kind of the first thing. Uh, secondly, uh for the repairs. Typically, when we get the repair back, we don't know what the cost would be upfront. We bill at that point.
What is the? So the reason I'm asking this is because I personally, and I feel like probably other people are doing the same thing, like I know I repair that I owe money for. But have it seems like the lag time is very long on that. So is that typical that it would be a long time that we would see to reduce those costs then?
Uh, those are the ones that have been built.
Okay.
Um, some of them, it sometimes takes a while until we get the parts, get them in. Get it all repaired and then assess. Sometimes depending on how bad it is, like liquid damage. We. We can't do that one in-house, so they have to allow it. And so it. We usually don't know until it comes back fixed.
And we're not able to share with parents what that cost is gonna be in terms of.
A lot of times, no, especially liquid ones. Um, those. Depending on on the device and uh what it hit, there might be multiple things that need replaced. Uh, so it might not just be the the logic or it may also need to be like a Wi-Fi card or a screen. So it it all depends.
As as a parent, I think it's a little bit unique for insurance this year.
Okay.
Um. Which might involve for not like making it harder anymore, but um. The thought that came into my head is that when it came out, so much information came out of new, online. Do this, do that, do this, do that. And. All things weren't working right probably at the time. People that were new.
Hmm.
Um. And like I saw how it went on, it wasn't quite working. It actually has changed some days. And then everyone got.
Oh, that was because of agents.
Yeah.
Ah, gotcha.
So. Just a thought for next year, um. Maybe put it out and then put it out again. And or offer it again, maybe after the first. Or or something like that. I mean, I feel the thought is because then it doesn't care if like all that relationship somehow maybe. I don't know. Maybe that's impossible, but uh you might get one. Not on the buy and the difference, but. You know. Um. And then I have another question. Because I know for a reason. Probably kids are actually taking their devices home. I know Lenton really isn't, right? Um. High school and middle school do. And then during school, how do they transport their devices? They don't have that access. They can't, can they use their?
They use their laptop bag.
They can't use a laptop. They're six grade and have a laptop bag, right?
And and I direct those up for third. Third or fourth.
So I was gonna throw out there, I know there was a teacher that like on the birthday was like, hey, here are my suggestions for you to buy a laptop bag and buy it like. So that's like a little bit of a family fair there. Um, just. If there is a reason that we aren't doing laptop bag, like you explained here with like showing something that we might wanna, I don't know, but how to communicate out more to the teachers because. I. I know with my laptop, that was all the link provided to the teacher, so just like an FYI, if there's a property and you don't want to show them that.
Yeah, thank you.
I don't know, the things that mean, I wish my kids were, I didn't share the people and stuff, so I'm, you know, grounded. Um, so maybe also not education, but education of like, I mean, you know.
Don't pick it up by the lid.
Thank you, yeah, um, and very, um, kind of with one hand, I would, yeah, yeah, little things like that. And if I need to start at the younger age so that it can play up, but um, maybe some of the older ages.
Thank you. What's the cost of the insurance? Uh, it was a sliding scale, I believe it was fifty dollars for um for full pay and it was down to was seven fifteen, I think, for free and I don't remember what we reduced, was it somewhere? And it depended on the device, yeah.
Yeah. That might be something that could be beneficial to um like speak about when we have the little houses um, to like get that information out to some parent there too, because I don't, depending how many kids and how many events and things are in, things on email sometimes get hidden, so have it out there to remind people that, you know, you're responsible now for the costs of things and that's what we offer, it'll be beneficial. We're a woman and all of them.
Yeah, it was a technology fee that was required, you know?
One of the reasons that because then it's just like pretty much my kid shot the laptop on a chopstick and breaks the screen and then I pay for it, but if it doesn't, it's not a very, it's not a very helpful part of
They're not a wager, I think. Yeah. I think that idea was just financial time, so we were in that uncertainties. Is there was a sort of loss in the budget if I remember that technology budget, right?
I think it was last year.
I think it was twenty twenty, if I remember. Anyway, it was and that was actually my thought is that that's something that they re-institute.
But um, like your time is well spent, I mean, I was that, I could do that's these and eventually some other things that you spend on. Well, and I saw the other day, I mean, it's one of the thirty-dollar housing paper exchange, but then a fifty-dollar insurance. Uh, you know, so another aspect of the children that it comes a little bit possibly not the whole of the world, then I know it's insurance, so we'll be under users, but anyway.
I love that, I I do like feedback.
This was Jeremy's first effort to bring us the policies and standards to report together some information and share with people what some current challenges are and areas in which the staff are working with us. And it was a very important piece, and I'm kind of almost working for what we need at this point, it's been like there's
For the whole support, the uh the big uh challenge that I have been hearing is when it comes to uh creativity, also music and video. But other than that, they have seemed to be working quite well. Thank you. Yeah.
One more question.
Okay, yes, so as you recall, uh, last summer, we made some uh bathroom partition upgrades at about three or four sets of bathrooms throughout the buildings as part of our renovation. Um, and speaking with Mrs. Moser in light of um potential renovations for our buildings uh this summer. We were asking, um, we decided from administrative level, we'd just like to rip off the Band-Aid and uh make the final uh partition upgrades to all of our remaining older partition, especially the metal ones, a lot of them have started rust out um, in the bathrooms, and so we would ask that you approve these uh proposals this evening, so we know in summer we can put in new partitions into all of the bathrooms and bring them up to uh ones that are similar to ones that you see here, nice composite material.
Good. Go ahead, hear him go through. Maybe even special.
So the only thing I had, and again, it's not necessarily related to the question to this, but I do think since Aaron's not here, I'll still provide. For those people following along at home, um, it kind of looks like we only went to one company, got one bid or going with one price. I know that's true because I know that through the IU, we're part of the Keystone Purchasing. So not to get on the spot, John, but can you just give like a a short little explanation of what that is? Just so people know that we're not.
Yes, absolutely. So when we participate in programs such as the Keystone Purchasing Network, which is run by CSIU, the Co-Start Program, which is run by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, PEPOM, which is also run by CSIU, and there are other purchasing programs. What they do is this program goes out to bid for us. As a participating entity, we ride along on their coattails. They do the work of going out, going to bid for multiple projects, multiple things, you know, all all the kinds of things. And they give back the bids from various uh vendors who give them their best price. And then based on whoever has the best quality and the best price, then the uh KPN will award a contract for that, and as we're a member of the KPN, we can participate and we know that we are getting the best price for this particular uh item uh or product, so, yeah.
That's what just, but the number like seven thousand dollars.
Yes, absolutely.
But it was important to point out we are.
Yes, and this is. Yes, and this is the company we used before, they've done other uh bathroom partitions for us and we've had great results, so, yeah.
Any other special?
Mr. He?
Yes.
Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Move on to the refrigerator.
Yes. Yes, absolutely, this is a Co-Start right for a roll-through refrigerator, as you know, in our Lindtown Kelly and uh middle school kitchens, our equipment uh is about thirty years old or so from the renovations in the nineties and we're doing a good job of keeping it up and running, but occasionally one particular piece of equipment just decides, I'm done, I'm I'm not going to run anymore. And in this case, it was one of our roll-through refrigerators at Kelly, um, we've had it repaired multiple times over the past few years and when the repair guy even says, hey, you might want to fix, you might want to replace this, that's kind of a sign. Um, so yes, we have a Co-Start book here for a replacement model, Charleston took over for our, um, and it's the exact same uh cooler that has lasted as well over thirty years, so hopefully this new one will give us another thirty years of service. So we ask that you uh approve this this evening so that we can keep our uh fruits and vegetables and other snacks.
Any special? I'll just say my experience.
I did, well, I'm 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 hopeful, I'm hopeful. Uh, I mean, it's a standard warranty, um, not thirty years, but yeah, yeah.
Uh, boss.
Yes, with mine, yeah. Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Yes. Hey, now, for information.
Okay, um, you have for you a proposal from EI Associates Architects uh regarding the Dragon's Den concession scene. As you know, this has been the topic for discussion for a while now. Um, and we've actually been working with the I Associates as part of our process of value engineering, uh, working to find ways to uh make the Dragon's Den a reality, so um, we have before you this evening the uh proposal for kind of an A to Z um design, uh, construction and uh finalization of the Dragon's Den if we should choose to move ahead with that, so um, again, this covers both the design as well as the engineering required to create our design that we come up with, uh, to go out to bid, uh, put out documents to get bids for it, they'll go through the bidding process with us. And then when a board selects the winning vendor, then they will work through construction management to get us to the end once the project is complete, so it's kind of an A to Z proposal. It's consistent with pricing that we've seen uh in other parts of the state as well, so happy to answer any questions and uh we are.
So this is a record for information, though.
Yes.
So if you do have a question now, it's fine. If you get it off there, so. Otherwise, I would assume that.
Yes, we'll we'll bring it back to future meeting interaction, and if you do think of questions between now and then, please feel free emailing me, we'll answer them.
Thank you. Well, indeed, it's March and in a nine-month school year, that brings us to the last one-third of the year. Coming away from last weekend's incredibly awesome musical, um, kudos to all involved there. It is state's time in our winter sports program and it was pretty exciting when you think our boys and girls basketball teams are still playing. We have individual wrestlers and swimmers that are still competing. And at the same time, Monday of this week was the beginning of spring sports. And if you appreciate the weather we've had this week, we've had one nice day and they've been outside and we had threat of inclement weather the very next day, pretty typical, and you know you're in March when that's exactly what's happening. It's the third marking period moving along towards conclusion on March twenty-eighth. And at the same time, scheduling at the high school is uh in its first steps with students indicating their course preferences. We have students stepping forward opting for SUN ATI in their senior year. And the Commonwealth University's ACE program is also now, when seniors are considering spending their senior year uh on campus at Bloomsburg, uh, under dual credit, earning toward both our high school diploma and uh undergraduate credits for school or college. Um, as you know, from Jeremy speaking tonight, we are reviewing not only our technology needs, but it's the time of the year when I put out those requests for any textbooks or resources, reading titles and selections that our teachers want to bring forward uh for consideration and order approval. So upcoming meetings here in the next month or two will have some of those pieces as well. And so it is where we're at and we're at the end of the view. Thank you.
Um, we have any more liaison requests?
Um, that's really inclusion, um, making that on different days, I'm going to have the second one, um, a lot of conversation uh regarding kind of what type of initiatives that we will be able to do and then things that were maybe smaller and things that we like in our own. Um, I wasn't there the first night, um, so I was a little bit confused and uh this that's not even the second night, we looked a lot at. Um, talking about how it worked with the last year, that uh poverty level is one thing that we see across the board and make sure that people are getting um the same paid education, everything through that. We also had some discussion on our special education and over the first. So it was the expression, I was there the first night and similar discussion about making sure that all of our information is available to the families. People from the first night would invest most of their initiatives discussed last year and thus.
Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, uh, are there any, anyone that wishes to hold any items out separately or? The discussion.
Mr. Stevens? Yes. Karen, yes, Mr. Spencer?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
For this.
Uh, it says it's gone yesterday, the board on a non-agenda.
There are no online comments.
So we'll move to rare comments.
Yeah. I I really enjoyed the presentation on technology, I think those are really great updates that um get some information. Um, I always love our uh what do we call it, our spotlight, our act on spotlight, I think that that's really great. Um, I wish that more people would come forward because I choose to believe that there are a lot of people online or that watch very. Um, I don't really have anything else, I didn't get to make it to the musical, we have that really set, um.
Uh, the musical was awesome, uh, I was just amazed at how incredibly talented our students are across all fields, but particularly particularly, you know, the musical um, and just the the wide variety of talents that were exhibited at that. So I really enjoyed it and uh it's, I've always thought.
I also love the musical, particularly this year, I noticed the dance. Now, lawless, the movies, so I, I was just, and of course, I'm saying it again, the costume, the costumes, it's uh, it's always. I'm thrilled for our swim team and with the relay team, some individuals going to state, they're running on the volley. Um, the stretch that I feel like to take with it. I I have a full awareness of how long you can go and the amount of work put in by the swimmers, coaches and parents who part of my, so congratulations. Um, the musical is amazing, um, I was shocked as a kid that I know can sing, but didn't know I could sing that well. Um, so they always go away. Um, congratulations to the girls' basketball team. So excited for them uh to be making history. Um, feels like the girl sports are doing that a lot lately, which is awesome, so kudos to them, good luck, and they're game on, they're in tandem. Um, and I'm super excited, I just remember my state, um, their games, when we're going this year, which is also really awesome because I think last year there was a lean. I think, um, so water bear is awesome, um. Any other chance, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, next week, PEPOM now, which you're at. Um, so kids go on sale, I think they're open to parents right at the moment, so soon, soon, um, yeah, soon, you know, enjoy this, it's gonna be I don't know, I think mostly I don't know. Um, these kids swim between degrees, four miles and then for practice. They practice six to seven days a week. Some kids go twice a day to practice, um. All all the children in school and all their other activities, um, and usually names being great, great. Um, pretty like the videos every year, um, I'm like the French, I have for the burger and they're all doing it and we're not able to make it. Those people are going around, so come on, and now um to that, so it's the speed that you would do awesome. Um, so positive thoughts, those things and all the other athletic events helping, um. And I love um hearing about new ways to. To be better deep holders and um reader readers and writers and stuff. Um, I kind of have worked as two of each that, two part of the D of the unions and two that struggle with it, so it's nice to see that. Um, we're really possible to come out and hopefully compete and. When Florida's walking first and I follow towards SAT drug, because if you have any high school kids, SAT drug, a lot of them are very.
Um, I too enjoyed the presentation, um. I just, I think anytime we can move the educational prism a little bit away from straight motivation, actually learning and understanding, we're always. On the right track, um. I want to say a huge congratulations to all the sports teams, um, I live in a basketball household. And this time of year, there's basketball on. Twenty-four hour date team play and so thank you to the parents who um are always live streaming the Lewisburg games. Because then we can actually watch games with people that I know is looking about, or my joke, you are not just. But I don't know who they are, so that has been great, um, we also took in guys and dolls. And fun fact, there is now a six-year-old little girl in Lewisburg who at some point every day. Asked Alexa to play the guys and all the soundtrack, so good job to everyone out there and amazing and maybe inclusion pressure on my daughters.
Um, so in closing, I'll just say generally you would be surprised the number of times this app doesn't report on score. And I've learned that. And I have to say, although I enjoyed the live English presentation a lot, I admit the loss of weekly scouts voting this. Every year I use a little bit of.
But I'm worried.
I I did my. It's nice to relate to. All right, I'll uh entertain, I'm open to adjourners, but it's still fun.